Well, I think if it's all right with all of you, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm Evan Ash and I'm the president of the St. David's Welsh Society of Kansas City, as you know, and we want to welcome you to be our part of our experience here this afternoon. We have a really rare opportunity to hear something of a more modern nature that is about life in Wales and how it extends over to us in Kansas. And it's around the subject of soccer. And we're hosting Shannon Dukes, who is coming to us from Penhend to Bath. I think I goofed it yet, didn't I? Anyway, she's over in Gwynedd. Let's just say that. I can do that better. And we also have with us one of the offspring of the society, Rhys Jones, who's coming to us from Cardiff, right?
Correct.
And he's going to be practicing his future skills as a sports broadcaster and working with that field as he is doing an interview, Shannon, about her life in Wales, as well as her experiences in playing soccer here in Kansas for Kansas State University. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shannon and Rhys.
All right. Well, hello, everybody. Yes, my name is Rhys Jones, as Evan just said. Let me get that down. And yeah, just to tell you just a little bit about myself before we get into it. As Evan just said, I'm a sports broadcasting student. I study in Cardiff, Wales. I've been in Wales for four years now. So I grew up, was born and raised in Kansas and Ovum Park, to be specific. And then after I finished high school, I decided to come over to the UK and study in Cardiff at Cardiff Metropolitan University. I did a lot of research in kind of sports data and that side of things. And now I'm getting more into the broadcasting field. And so, yeah, today I am joined with Shannon Dukes to talk about her experience with soccer in Kansas and kind of talk about Wales and living over in the US for a few years. So Shannon has got a little presentation, I believe, that she can try to pull up. So Shannon, if you just want to introduce yourself and get that presentation up, go right ahead.
I'm Shannon, as Rhys has mentioned, and I'm just here today to share about life in Wales. And because I currently live in Manhattan, Kansas, as I currently play soccer on the soccer team there. So I prepared a little presentation about it. So can everyone see that? Okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Perfect. And you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So first, I just want to talk about my childhood. So I was born in Bangor in Gwynedd, which is just around here in 2000. So I'm currently 21 and I grew up and I still currently live in Penrind Daydrith, which is where I currently am right now. And this is just under the armpit, as I like to call it, because I picture Wales as like a person. So this would be the arm and then just under the armpit. I'm one of six children. So the picture on the left is just me and my siblings when I was younger. And the oldest is Ben. He currently lives down South Wales. He lives in Pontardbaweh and he is married with two kids. And he's a deputy principal at high school. And then Karis is currently down there as well. She lives in Swansea and she also is a teacher. She teaches biology in high school. And then my sister Kayleigh, she is the only one right now that lives in England. She lives up in Yorkshire in Leeds and she finished university up in Derby and stayed in England since. And then there's me between Kayleigh and Chloe. And then Chloe is two years younger than me and she's currently down in Swansea University studying psychology. And then so the only one left at home full time with my parents is Kieran, who is currently studying his A-levels in a local high school here. And he's hoping to go to university too. And then just a bit about my parents, my dad Colin is actually from the same area that I'm from. He's from Minforth originally, which is just up the road. And then my mom Carol, she is from Towan, which is like in mid Wales and she was born and raised there. And then they both moved down to where my dad lived in Penrind Daydrith area. And then I went to Welsh Elementary and High School. So Escocham Coth, which is in Penrind Daydrith, which is the local elementary school here. And then I went to Escole Aviarnid, which is down the road in Porthmadduck. And I went there until I was 16, so.
Very cool. So I have a few points and a few questions just about this slide. First of all, can I guess which one you are in that picture? Are you the farthest left?
Yeah, I am.
Oh, my God, what a guess. Very good. Very cool. Second, my dad is also, my dad is from Towan, born and raised. And I just went there about a month ago just to go see my granddad. So that's just a weird coincidence that. Third, when you say you went to Welsh Elementary and High School, does that mean you, was that a Welsh-speaking school or an English-speaking school? And do you know how to speak Welsh?
Yeah, so Welsh Elementary, yeah, they speak Welsh. And when I first went to elementary school, I could only speak English. And there was just one other girl. So I was six at the time, I think I started in elementary school. And I couldn't speak a word of Welsh. And it was one of the first times I'd ever heard Welsh around me, because at home we spoke English. So like, but I don't remember learning it. I just remember one day I could just speak Welsh somehow. I think like as a kid, you're just so, you're like a sponge. So I just picked it up without even trying. And then, but my dad, both my parents speak Welsh, but at home we just never did.
Interesting. I'm jealous, jealous of that fact that you were able to just pick it up. Because Welsh is such a difficult language to just pick up and learn. And I'm jealous myself that my parents never, never taught me any Welsh, although probably wouldn't have done me a whole lot of good in growing up in Kansas City. And then, yeah, lastly, I just want, I want to hear more, as I think we'll see on the next slide, about where you live now in Penrindu Drath? Is that okay? All right, let's hear more about that.
So Penrind Daydrith is a little village up in North Wales. If you can see the map where the red arrow is, it's pointing just at it. So it translates to Peninsula with two beaches. And as of 2011, it had a population of 2,150. So it's not that big, but it's pretty comfortable. And then it currently, and it still does today, has the nickname Cockletown, which is what local people here sometimes refer it to as they like fish for cockles, which are like some sort of more muscular type of thing. So it's nicknamed Cockletown. And historically, why people originally moved to the area was because over in Blainafestinog, it had the slate industry. And then in Portmadduck, then it had the harbor. So Penrind's kind of in the middle of those two. So it was a good place for people to live. And Penrind is actually the 19th most speaking Welsh community in Wales, where 76% of the residents aged three or older stated that they could speak Welsh in the 2011 census. And then Penrind Daydrith FC is the local soccer club here. And soccer is huge up in this part of Wales.
Very cool. So I just have a quick question about, you know, that's a, an area of Wales that I'm just personally not super familiar with. I've been up, up north a few times, visiting family and just kind of going on little trips. But where do you kind of go when you're living there to, if you want to go on like a little day trip or something like that? Is there, do you have a few favorite spots that are kind of close by or anything like that?
If you look at the arm piece of North Wales that's sticking out where it says Nevin, there's a nice little, it has really good beaches there. Like one I personally love going to is like Aberystwyth. The water over there at one part of the beach is like very, very clear, which is very rare because the rest of the beaches are very murky water. But in one section of Aberystwyth, the water is pretty clear. So it's good to go up there and I don't know, go to the pub and have a pint or to get some ice cream and walk around. And then honestly, anywhere with a beach is a good walk that I can go and walk up to. So, but we also live in Snowdonio, which is like the national park where Snowdon, the biggest mountain in Wales is there. So we're able to walk up there a few times. So, yeah, there's quite a few things to do.
Very cool. Have you, have you, and so you've done Snowdon before, like properly?
Yeah, we've done it. I did it when I was 11 first. And then we're actually planning to go up there on June 1st, if the weather is good.
Oh, goodness. That's a, that's a feat I haven't conquered yet at my point. Okay, very cool. I'm interested to hear more about that local soccer club and your kind of soccer playing history a little bit more.
Before that, this is just a picture of Penrind Daydrith. So the two fields at the bottom, that, that's the soccer club. And then this picture really just shows like how small, but kind of spread out the community is, so.
That's gorgeous.
So soccer. Call it football over here. But I have to refer to it as soccer so everybody understands. So I started playing for Penrind Daydrith FC at the under sevens level until under 12. So I started playing soccer when I was six. And then I stayed at the club for quite a while. And then I joined a boys' academy as there was no girl soccer around at the time because it's such a small population, there's not really a calling for it. So I played with boys up until I was 13, I think. And at the same time, I was playing for Penrind. I played for two years at Porthmadduck Academy. And then I did a year at Bangor Academy. And that is the like highest level of youth soccer for boys at that age. And then I also played for Puchelly Girls from under 12s to under 14s. And then as I was getting older, I wasn't allowed to play with the boys anymore because of the rules in Wales, which have now been changed thankfully. But so I had to go to England to play soccer. So I decided that we would have trials at Everton, which is a big Premier League club over here. So I joined them at under 15 level. And I was talking to my dad and I thought I joined at 13, but he says I joined at 12. But it was under 15s. And then I played until the under 23 level, but I left at the age of 18 to go to K-State. And then I also played for Wales 21 times at under 15, under 16, under 17 and under 19 level in seven different countries in Europe. And then I got the opportunity to captain my team twice, once against England and once against Turkey. So and then after I finished soccer in England and Wales, I decided to join K-State. And I joined them in 2019.
Wow. So I wasn't aware that you played for Wales at a, at a youth level. How, how big of a, of a step up was that in terms of, I guess, quality, but also in terms of the experiences that you gathered while you were playing with them as opposed to playing, you know, for the local, for the local clubs and stuff like that? You're going from such a local kind of regional area to playing for a national and international level? Like, how big of a step up was that?
It was a pretty big step up. Like it was the best players of the best teams that you could have got together. Whereas you kind of had two or three good players on each team that I was playing against weekly. But then when you had the best players all together on one team, it was kind, it was very competitive and you had to like earn your like space and stuff like that. But then it was a step up to the fact like we would play smaller countries and bigger countries. Like we played England, I've played against Germany. And, and even then, like you would expect to not win against the likes of Germany and England and stuff. But even the smaller nations, like it really, they were even like, they were good too. So I can, I kind of, one lesson I learned was like not to underestimate any team at an international level because they will surprise you. So, yeah. And it was a good experience. It was kind of my first experience away from home too. Because when we go on like national team camps, we'd be away for four or five days. And it was the first time that I had actually like been away from my parents for like such a long amount of time. So it was a good experience and I really enjoyed my time playing for Wales.
Okay, so I've got three questions following that. First of all, just so I get an idea of my head of your kind of specific playing experience, what position did you play?
I play left back or left centre back, but I preferably play left back.
Okay, so somewhere in the back. Okay. So with that being said, does that mean you didn't score any goals at that level? Or did you manage to score a goal in any of those appearances?
No, I did not manage to score a goal. I'm pretty, pretty stay back.
That's a difficult, even, it's even difficult for people playing up front to score goals at a national level. So, you know, I was, I was just interested to know what position you played, just so I could get that in my head. And then where was your favorite place that you played with Wales? So not necessarily, kind of regardless of the match, where was your favorite away trip with Wales?
And I think one that's really stuck with me the most is probably, I have two. One was, it's a small island and it's called the Faroe Islands. It's between Iceland and Scotland. It's between the, in the ocean there. And it's such a small nation. I think it's 50,000 people. And but we played in this big stadium, like we played in the national stadium there. It was empty, but it was such a good experience. Like I'd never played on like, in such a big stadium before. And it, just the culture and like driving around like, like, because where we were staying, it was like the main city and it was really the only city that they had on the island. And it was just such a unique experience because, I mean, there was only 50,000 people living in this nation. And when we played against them, like I would say that half the city was like in the stands. And then another trip, I would say I went to Kazakhstan.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, which is technically in Central Asia, but they play in the European Nations League. And it was just a, that was also just a crazy experience because we arrived at night and then we were taken to a, like a complex. And all four teams that were playing at the time stayed there. And we weren't allowed to leave the complex because they said it was dangerous. But so it was just a crazy like thing, just to stay in the same complex for like seven days. And we played three games and then, so, yeah, that was crazy. And the food was not the best, so we lived off bread and cold broccoli. And I probably lost about 10 pounds, but honestly, they, it was good. It was a good experience. And just like, even if it was bad at the time, like we were living off bread and cold broccoli, I think the people that I was with, like my teammates, really made it like a great trip, so.
And then what was your most memorable game that you played in? Is there, is there either an individual performance that you remember or just a big competitive match that, that Wales won? Or is there a match that sticks out in your head when playing for Wales at a youth level?
I think one that stands out was at the under 17s level. We were playing against Turkey, I think, and we were in Latvia. And I think we had to win that game to qualify for the next round of the UEFA Euros at the under 17s level. And I was lucky enough to be captain for that game. And so I just remember like, I think it was one, one other, like during the game. And like my coach looked over at me, like she shouted at me. She was like, come on, like we've got to, we've got to score. So I don't know. And then we ended up scoring and it was crazy. And then we got around, through to the next round. So I think that was just a good game that, like one that really sticks out to me.
That's crazy. That's, yeah, playing at an international level is so unbelievably difficult. Like I, while I've been here at uni, I've kind of been around international athletes in multiple sports. But playing for the national team in football is so, is such a big deal. It's so difficult to get into that setup in the first place. And then to play for the team regularly and to, like you just said, captain them is such a crazy big deal. So that's, that's really, really impressive to hear, actually. And then now let's get into, let's get into K-State now. I'm interested to hear how you got kind of over to K-State from, from that, from that level of playing.
So I knew at the time, I was playing with the under 23s at Everton. And I knew that I wanted to like continue my education and get a degree and play soccer at the same time. And the colleges at home didn't really give that opportunity to play like at a high level and do my education at the same time. So I'd always known from a young age that, because somebody local had gone out to the US to, on a soccer scholarship. So I was kind of like, oh, like that sounds like a good idea. Like it's something I was interested in, but I'd never really taken seriously or anything. And then when I was at Everton, one of my teammates, she told me that she was looking. And then I was like, oh, like I'm, I was thinking about it too. And she was like, well, I've just committed to this school. Like I think we would have a great time together there. And I think like he'd be a great fit. He said he's like looking for defenders. So at the time I was like, okay, like she was a year older than me too. So she was going out a year before me. So I, she gave, gave me the email of my head, of my now current head coach. And so I sent him an email just being like, hey, like I'm looking to play soccer in the US. Like, just let me know if you want to hear more about me. And then he answered and then he just requested some film of me playing soccer. So I sent some film over and then he, and then I spoke with him on the phone, him and the assistant head coach at the time. And then they, we just spoke and then they offered me a scholarship to attend K-State. So I accepted it in December 2018. And then I arrived here in July 2019. And then I'm currently majoring in social work and I'm going into my senior year in the fall semester. So I've done three years already. And then because of soccer, I've been able to travel to 12 different states. And then I graduate in summer 2023.
Wow. Okay, so first, there's a lot to, lot to unpack here with this particular segment. First, talk to me about kind of the soccer experience that you've had at K-State. You know, you, you've just detailed how you've played for the Welsh National Team at a youth level. You played for a Premier League academy at a youth level. How different is it just playing soccer in the US? What are the, what are the big differences that you've found between playing back, back at home and playing in the US?
I think the main difference is probably like the soccer style. Like I feel at home, it's very technical and very tactical. And over, it, over here is technical and tactical as well, but there's, I don't know, everyone back home is just so soccer crazy. And there are so many different sports over here in the US that I've been able to enjoy and watch. And I understand why everyone is so into them too. But I think being soccer being the like biggest sport in Wales and the United Kingdom, I don't know, I think it just has that edge over it. But I've really enjoyed like playing at K-State. Like it has given me a taste of like professional soccer in a sense because we really are living like professional athletes. We're training in the morning, we're weightlifting, we're doing fitness, like we're getting fed like professional athlete foods. Like, so it really is like such a good experience and I've loved like every minute of it and it's been amazing so far.
And then how has, in terms of, I suppose, results, I guess, how, how has your, your three years that you've been playing with K-State gone on that front?
My first year, I think we didn't do too bad. My second year, we did the best that we'd ever done. The program's relatively new. I think it was founded in 2016. So we've only, next season is our sixth season in the Big 12. So it's kind of a new program. We're still getting players in, like we're building like reputation and stuff. And then last season, unfortunately, we did finish bottom. But the one game we did win was against KU, so I'm not going to complain about that.
Yeah, and just so, just for those that aren't aware, like when you say that you play in the Big 12, what kind of, can you just name some of the universities that you play against? You just said you play against KU, but what are the other like big universities that you play against in that conference?
University of Texas at Austin, Oklahoma, Oklahoma State, Iowa State, Baylor, Texas Tech, West Virginia.
Oh, that's kind of random. Randomly just popped in there in terms of geographic location. That's kind of a random one. So those are pretty, pretty big, you know, sporting powerhouse universities, I suppose, that you're, that you're playing against. So you, so you've enjoyed, enjoyed your time just playing soccer in K-State so far. You've got one year left. What, what kind of goals have you set for yourself for, for you this last year that you're going into?
For my last year, I think I've kind of, I really want to just enjoy it more than, I mean, I've enjoyed the last three years I've been here. But I think as it's my senior year, I just want to enjoy it, have fun, just play soccer with my teammates. And some of them have become like my best friends. And it's just crazy to think that if I'd never have come over here, that I wouldn't have met them, so.
And then do you think you have a future with soccer after this? Either trying to continue playing or trying to, to, to work in a soccer industry or coach or anything like that? Do you have any plans like that so far?
Um, I'm not really sure what I want to do with soccer after this. I think I might play for fun, like on the sidelines. Like I know I want to go back to university in the UK and get my masters after I get my bachelor's degree. So I think I might play soccer on the side for fun. But if not, then I definitely want to go into like coaching of some sort. I just think giving back to like the younger soccer players. After all the help I've received throughout the years, it's just a good thing to do. So it's definitely something I'm interested in.
Definitely. And then you just kind of touched on, touched on this. What are your plans outside of soccer, once you're done at K-State next year?
I currently, hopefully, I want to come back home, well, to the UK. And I want to go to university to get my masters in social work. And that will be a two-year course in the UK. And then I'm currently debating whether I really enjoy research and like research methods. So I'm not sure if I want to go into doing a social work PhD or if I want to go into just working straight into social work after I finish my masters. So that's the plan. And I haven't really decided if I want to stay in the UK after I'm done with my education or if I want to go elsewhere, so.
And then kind of talking mainly just about what, what you're studying. Have you found, I know you haven't exactly gone to university in the UK, but have you found that there's big differences between studying at the highest level that you did in the UK, which I guess would have been what, high school?
Yeah, it's like A-levels, yeah.
Yeah. Is there a big difference into just how the school system and how much work you have to do in the UK between the US?
I mean, when I speak with my friends who go to college back home, I think my classes are very, like I've had to take classes that aren't really like related to my degree, to get my degree. So like, I'm doing a Bachelor of Science, so I had to do science classes. And I've taken like three geology classes, so like rocks. And honestly, like I, like when I first enrolled in them, I like rolled my eyes. I was like, for goodness sakes, like I don't want to do this. Like, why do I need to learn about rocks? But honestly, they were one of my most interesting classes. Like to a point where I was like, do I want to switch majors to geology? But no, I decided to stick with social work. So I think, and then when I speak with my friends back home, there's this very, they're very concentrated on the one area. Whereas I've been able to have like a variety of classes, like this summer, I'm currently, I'm currently in summer classes. And one, I'm in interpersonal communication in conflict right now, which is a class that I never would have been able to take back home. But it's just interesting to learn about different things. And I feel like at this level, I'm getting like a more well-rounded education rather than just learning about social work, social work, social work. So I think it's definitely been better for myself because I've enjoyed learning about different things. And I think I'd have gotten bored just learning about the same thing for so long. Not bored, but it would have got, it would have got tiring. But no, I've, I've enjoyed the education over here, yeah.
That's just such an interesting perspective that you have because I basically did the exact opposite of you. Whereas you grew up in the UK and then you went four-year degree in the US. And I grew up in the US and I'm doing a four-year degree in the UK. And I, I don't know if it's just because I knew what I wanted to do. But I found that, like you said, in the UK, it's very concentrated on, if this is your degree, like my, my undergraduate degree that I just finished was in sports analysis and video analysis and looking at data and stuff. And all of my classes were all sports analysis-related or sports coaching or something like that. I didn't have to take any English classes. Yeah, I'm a Bachelor of Science as well. I didn't have to take any geology classes or anything like that. So, and I appreciated that. I appreciated that I wasn't, you know, wasting, wasting my time, I suppose, with things I didn't think that I actually needed. But it's a, it's a very interesting perspective to hear that you think that you've gotten a much more well-rounded education, which I think I would agree with. I think you, you definitely have gotten a much more well-rounded education than I have. Okay, so let me just look at some of my extra questions that we've got. So when you're in the US, what do you miss the most from the UK while you're in the US? Because you're in the US from what, July? Do you go home for Christmas when you're, when you're at school? So you're, you're in the US from what, July to around Christmas and then from January to May?
Yeah.
So you're only in the UK for like two, maybe? So you're only in the UK for like two, maybe three months of the year, what do you miss the most from the UK while you're in the US?
Um, definitely my family, I definitely miss them the most, I mean, it was weird. Growing up in a big house and I've always had them, everyone around me, to then moving across the country, uh across the world to a different country. So it's definitely weird not being able to like just see them every day. It's not as weird now cuz I'm three years into it, but I still FaceTime my mom every day. I still call her every day, like, there's not a day goes by where I don't call my mom, whether it's to talk or ask her a question, like, oh, how do I cook this chicken? But no, I def- I still call home like all the time and then I keep in contact with my siblings too. Cuz I like to know what's going on in their lives. And then I also miss my cats, I have five cats at home. So I do I do miss my cat and then every, all my friends in the US are all dog people, they're obsessed with dogs and. I love cats and they always grill me for it, but I don't care, I love my cats.
I'm not not surprised by that at all. And then I guess to flip it on its head, while you're, when you go back home and visit your family, what do you miss the most from the US uh while you're in the UK?
Uh, Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is up there, like, I have never had such a good chicken burger before, the first time I had it, I was like, dang. Americans got something right. And uh so I always bring, so I also got my mom onto the Chick-fil-A sauce. I buy a bottle of Chick-fil-A sauce and I bring it home and my mom loves it. Um, and another thing I always have in my suitcase when I'm coming home is Swedish fish, love Swedish fish.
Interesting, um, okay, so you mentioned kind of your post-university um plans, I guess. Do you, is there anything that could kind of keep you in the US? Do you do you? What do you like living about uh or what do you like about living in the US the most? And uh do you think that you could live in the US like full-time for the rest of your life?
Um, the thing I like most, I don't know, I think that people are really much more welcoming here. And I feel like not that everyone's miserable in the UK, but everyone walks out with like a straight face. And I feel like even in the grocery store, like, people will say hi to me and I'm like, I don't even know you, but hello. Um, so like, that's kind of nice, the people are really nice here, um, they're very welcoming. And then, uh could I see myself in the US? Um, I could, I just, I think I'd have to get over the fact that I wouldn't see my family. Like, I'd miss out on a big part of my family's life, like, I have nephews right now and like when my other siblings have kids, like. I think I'd have to weigh up whether I'd wanna miss out on their lives and stuff, but at the same time. Um, I know there are a lot more social work options out here, for example, like um medical social work is one aspect of social work I'm interested in. And we don't really have that back here because um we have like a public health system. But there are social workers in the public health system here, but it's not like as prominent roles and stuff. So I could live in the US, like, I haven't, I haven't really thought. Too much into where I wanna live in the future, I'm just trying to get my education done, cuz I've even thought about Canada, never been to Canada, but. Canada seems interesting too, so I don't really know, I haven't, I haven't said no to nothing yet.
Definitely, I I think that's the, I think that's the way to go about it, um especially with one year left, just uh, you know, just enjoy that last year. Um, when you said that you, you know, missed your family, that's been such a big part. How did you navigate um the pandemic uh just happening? Because I know for me, when when the pandemic happened in in March of twenty twenty, I was in the UK at the time. And when all the uh travel restrictions and everything came out of nowhere, I had to dip out of the UK as fast as I could. I got, I came back home and and spent the the heat of the isolation periods um back home in Kansas. And then I ended up staying in Kansas for the for the next nine months, I think, until until the following February, doing everything online. And I hated it, but that was just kind of what the pandemic left me, how did you navigate that um in in that scenario?
Um, so in March twenty twenty, as soon as like the travel restriction came in, I went back home. And then I was home until August, I think. And classes at K State were still online, like everything was online, but I had to go back because soccer was coming back. And the season, we didn't have a regular season, uh cuz we usually have like quite a lengthy preseason and we play a few games at like non-conference games. But uh the NCAA like changed the um con- like conference to just conference games. Cuz there was like, they didn't want us to be spreading COVID to other conferences and stuff. So I came back in August, I think, and then everything was online, so I. Was just in my house and I was playing soccer and then I was doing online classes. And we had online classes, I think this past spring semester was the first, no. The fall semester was back in person, but I just chose to stay online because I really liked online classes. So I stayed with it, but no, I was lucky enough, I was able to come back out here, like I did go home and I missed the end of. My freshman year, but I was lucky enough to come back out here, so.
And then was that difficult um not being with your family in a time of uncertainty? Or did you just kind of put your head down and just kind of grind through it a little bit?
Um, it was kind of worrying just cuz, I mean, the media, it was like a big deal and stuff. And like I'd read about like the COVID cases back home and they'd like report back to me every day, like my parents would, they'd be like, oh, there was twenty-three new cases, like. In Penrindigress alone, and I'd be like, ooh, so I was kind of worried of the, uh like, about that, like about my whole family's like. Health and stuff, but I knew that there were still like restrictions in place in the UK that were pretty strict, so the chances of them actually catching it was pretty low. But back in the US, yeah, I kind of put my head down, like I knew I was cut. Luckily enough, the semester was cut short, so we weren't allowed to go back to uh campus after after Thanksgiving break. So I got to go home about. No, November time, so I was actually home for two months rather than a month, which was nice.
That is nice, um, yeah, that's that threw such a huge spanner in the works for me that. I can only imagine it it did the same for you, um, and then I've just.
Could I jump in just a moment, Reese? Do you have any more slides that you wanna share or do you wanna maybe step out of the the uh PowerPoint?
Yeah, I can stop sharing it.
There, okay, that way we can appreciate you more. Thank you for letting me do that.
Um, so I think I've just got a a couple more questions, um firstly. Um, I kind of forgot to ask this when you were kind of talking about your soccer um. Uh, background and and you playing, how was it playing with boys for so long? Was, did, do you think that that helped develop you as a player or give you, like, how was that experience? That seems so interesting, I could not imagine playing for that long with with boys when you're, were you the only girl most of the time?
Yeah, yep, so um with Penrin. Uh, soccer club, which was like my starting like club where I began all, it wasn't that weird, like. I was kind of like one of the boys because I also went to elementary school with all of them, so. It really wasn't that weird cuz they, I grew up around all of them, like it wasn't weird, like, they knew I played soccer, like we played soccer in. Elementary school, like during recess and stuff, so it wasn't that weird with them. Um, but then when I moved on to like the boys academies, um, I was the only girl at the time playing in the whole academy league and it wasn't really. I think my dad had to um like have a meeting with, I think I trialed for Porthmatic Academy. The year prior to me joining and the coach at the time um said that he didn't want a girl on the team, so I wasn't allowed to join at the time. But then the following year, um, they got a new coach and they let me, they let me on the team. But um, so then I spent two years there before moving to like a better academy, which was Banger Academy, and I spent a year there. And it was kind of more awkward around them because we were, I think, we were around the age of twelve, I think, so it was kind of a weird time for everybody. But and I hadn't, I didn't really know many of them, so it was kind of like, cuz everyone came from all over, like the local area to play for these academies, so. It was kind of weird with them, it was more awkward than weird, I guess, cuz I thought I was awkward, but then they were being awkward too, so. I sometimes stood to the corner by myself, but I don't know, it wa- it was a good experience and it definitely helped me with my soccer because. Um, I mean, there was no, there was not a good quality of girls' teams and there sometimes was no girls' teams, so I mean, that was the only option I had, so. Whether it was awkward or not, I kind of had stuck it up if I wanted to go anywhere with it, so, yeah.
That's crazy to hear, I wasn't expecting to hear that when you detailed your uh playing career. Um, okay, so I think I've just got two more um questions. One, what are, do you have a list of things or one thing in particular that you wanna do in your last year in terms of? Maybe traveling somewhere or something you wanna achieve um in your final year at K State in in the US?
Um, I think traveling-wise, I really wanna go to the East Coast for some reason, I don't know why, but. I think people always say to me like, like when we discuss like the US, they're like, oh, you're a West Coast or an East Coast type of person. And I've been to the West Coast, I've been to California and I don't think I'm a West Coast person. I think I'm more of an East Coast person, so I really wanna go to visit, I wanna do like Boston and like uh Rhode Island, Connecticut. Like New England type of stuff, um, I just find them interesting and then the history around it, I'm kind of a history nerd, so I really like. Like the history surrounding New England and stuff, so I wanna travel over there, hopefully before I go home. And then academic-wise, I aiming to graduate with like honors, hopefully, that's the goal.
And then is just, is there just like anything else that you, I don't know, just like wanna do, like some sort of experience? That's like you can only get in the US or is there, is there nothing, have you, do you think you've pretty much done what you've wanted to do on that front?
That's a great question I haven't really thought about, I mean. I don't know, I might have to get back to you on that one, I'm not sure, yeah, if anyone has any recommendations, then let me know.
Yeah, that's that's a tough question, I'm, cuz I'm coming back um from the UK, I've, I'm just finishing my course. And I'm gonna be leaving next Saturday for the final time, I won't be coming back here, so I've been kind of in that. In that headspace a little bit, is there anything I wanna do, I I either for the first time or one last time before I go back to the US? So it's, it's a, it's a thinker, I know it's a tough question. Um, and then lastly, I guess, um, overall, what is the best thing that this experience has given you? Being in the US and kind of being away from your family for so long?
Um, I think lifelong friends, honestly, is one of them, kind of, just cuz I've been away from my family. Like, it sounds cheesy, but like with the friends I've made, I've kind of had to make like my own family and stuff. So like my roommates, for example, um, two of them transferred last year, however, I lived with them for a semester. Like, we lived separately before that and then we decided to live together. And it was probably one of the best semesters of my life, like just living with them, like, and they were all so different, one was from Oklahoma, one was from Texas. And then the other was from Nebraska, and then there was me from Wales. But it was just such a good experience, like they're definitely some lifelong friends and we've always joked, like, they're like, when are we coming to Wales? And so I think they're a year younger than me, so I think the graduation ship's gonna be Wales twenty twenty-four.
Always fun, that'll be a good time, um, and then do you think that you've? I mean, obviously, at this age, when you go to university, I I think everybody kind of, I guess, grows. Um, as a as a person and grows more independent, but do you feel like that's even more the case for you? Because you've been so kind of independent and and on your own?
Yeah, I definitely think I've become more independent, like, and sometimes like I'll come home and like, I'll be cutting like a vegetable or something. And my mom's like, move out the way, like, let me do it, you can't do it, and I'm like, mom, like, I live in a foreign country by myself, like, I can cut a vegetable, like, I'm fine. And then, um, yeah, definitely, like, when I, I mean, granted, my younger sister, she's in her, she's just finishing up her first year of university. Eh, at Swansea, and sometimes when she comes home and tells me the stories that she does, I'm definitely like, no, I'm definitely more mature and independent than you. But no, yeah, I definitely think it's definitely made me grow up, but it's definitely made me appreciate like coming home and having my mom do things for me. Cuz over there, I can't have my mom do like something for me, so definitely more appreciative of all my family.
Yeah, that's the, that's pretty much the exact same for me, every time I come home. And even if it's just one load of laundry that I don't have to do and. So is it some dinner that I don't have to make, then I'm like, thumbs up to that, I really miss that uh for the short time that I get to experience that.
Remember, remember your mom's watching.
I know, and I know she's, I know she's looking forward to me coming home in a week and and having to do all those things. Um, well, yeah, I think that's all the, all the questions that I've got. Um, does, does anybody else, anybody have any questions for Shannon that they'd like to ask?
From what I've watched on the chat line, uh, it looks like those questions have already been asked. Did a great job, uh, I have one for Shannon that's a little bit unique. Uh, our older daughter uh in high school formed a pen pal relationship with someone living in Kent in England. And back in the nineteen eighties, um, our daughter had actually gone over earlier. And had visited her and her family, but when it came time for her pen pal to come over and see us. And we were up in Nebraska, there was an anxiety that they thought that she was coming to a country of gangsters. Cuz of movies, did you run into any of that sense of things with your family?
Um, they weren't really that worried about me coming over, I mean, it wasn't that bad, but. I definitely, I think everyone over here kind of, I think we just hear things on the news and we think it's a bit more violent. Cuz I mean, we live in the rural countryside, not much goes on, but it, we don't really have much. I don't know, like violence in the countryside or I don't really hear of it, but my parents know, they were definitely pushing me to to go. Whether that's a good thing or not, if they were trying to get me out the house or or if they wanted me to experience it, so I think they were kind of like, it was a one in a lifetime opportunity. So they pushed me to go.
Manhattan and Lawrence are both nice, isolated communities with their, kind of their own economy, but. Uh, yeah, you're right, Kansas City does have a bit of a crime problem and uh has since the days of Jesse James, so.
One other suggestion I have for you, Shannon, you were asking for something to do before you leave that would be unique. It would be neat if you could take in an experience with Native Americans here. Um, there's a number of possibilities that are too far away. Um, there's a large Native American uh collection of tribes down in Oklahoma. And in Lawrence, there's the Haskell Native American University that might give you some leads on. How you might take those experiences home, so just a suggestion for that. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, uh, first, Shannon, since you and your parents speak, a comrade. Uh, do you, have you taken in the whole family? Do you all speak or not?
Uh, yeah, we all, we all speak Welsh, so all, me and all my siblings, we all went through the same school and uh so we all speak Welsh and then my parents. Uh, my dad, he sounds very, very Welsh when he speaks.
Well, day in and day out, as you're, you know, going about, do you, or does it?
At home, we don't know, like, uh, English is our like main language at home, but with my friends and stuff, like in the community we live in, like. Um, outside of the house, like, everyone speaks Welsh, so like, if I'm at the shop and I need, if I'm buying something, like. The conversation's in Welsh, or if I see somebody in the grocery store that I know, like, the conversation's always in Welsh. So it's definitely still a big part of our lives, even if we don't speak here at home.
Yeah, a- and secondly, um, you've probably heard here in the States. And people, well, people will say, oh, I don't know how you can speak Welsh, it's such a hard, hard language. Well, a little bit of what I've learned is, it's not compared to English. You know, it's very phonetic, it has very good rules, there again, compared to English. How have you found, uh, have you found it like that too? People will say it's hard, uh, how do you see it?
Um, so the first time I lived with one of my roommates who was from Colorado, she had just moved in. So my, I lived with uh another international uh soccer player, but then she moved out. And then I had a freshman coming in from Colorado to live with me and obviously like the, we'd spoken English back and forth to each other. And obviously, like the, we'd spoken English back and forth to each other. And then when we finally met, it was like one of the first days I was living with her, I was on, uh, a call with my mom. And I started speaking Welsh and like I could see her head popping over the kitchen counter like. Is she okay? When I got off the phone, she, she turned around to me, she was like, I thought you were having a stroke. She was like, I had no idea what was happening. And then she was like, I had no idea, like you spoke a different language. I had no idea that there was even a different language in Wales, so. She, I kind of told her like, no, like I can speak a different language, like I usually do it if I'm around people, like I wanna like say something about them or something. But, um, yeah, she was very surprised and then anytime I've spoken Welsh around people, uh. Like my roommate I live with now, um, she says it's like very rough and like she's, she always thinks like I'm be, like I'm angry or. Uh, like I'm shouting at my parents, like when I'm on the phone, but I'm like, no, we were just talking about my day.
We have a question, uh, Shannon, uh, someone was curious, but what does your father do for a career occupation?
Uh, my dad's an engineer, so he, I think mechanical, I was having that conversation today with somebody, I was like, he said the mechanical or electrical. Uh, he works for, so it's at the factories in Blenafestiniog, which is like where the slate industry was. Uh, he works for a German company, it's called Reha. Uh, they have quite a big, uh, base in Alabama, I think, too, but yeah, he's a mechanical engineer.
Okay, okay. Other questions from anyone before we? Well, Shannon and Reese, we wanna really thank you two for taking time, sharing with our rather eclectic group here. In Kansas City, uh, it helps us appreciate more about the heritage that we all celebrate. In, in the Welsh. And I think you give us another perspective, a real-life perspective. It's not coming from a book, it's coming from daily life and that's always so important. Um, for those of you that are listening, a few things to let you know what we've got going on in the society for this coming. Balance of twenty twenty-two, uh, we're still working, uh, with the guidance of our tour Roberts. To, to try to have a presentation on Zoom about the Welsh world in Patagonia, the other end of the world. And a chance to learn more about that. Uh, we also, I think Lori, we're gonna be looking into, uh. Through your friend, the possibility of Welsh bands being an opportunity for us to also celebrate our heritage. And then in September, uh, we'll have here locally our traditional, uh, Welsh Film Festival. And we'll be sharing more about that with you as the time approaches. Uh, any closing comment from all of you before we say goodbye?
Shannon, I just wanted to say thank you. It was a very interesting hour. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me too. It was an honor to speak with you all.
Yeah, thank you. It was great and very unique.
And Ruth and Alan, uh, I think you've done a good job with this guy. And I really appreciate his willingness to share with us today.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Reese, you guys, you take care. Hey, let us know when you're around. Watch, find some opportunities to get together. Absolutely. Well, if there's nothing further, let me wish you all a good Sunday. Diesel Da, and, uh, we'll see the rest of you later and Shannon, maybe sometime when you're in Kansas City, give a shout out.
I will.
Okay, take care everyone, peace.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.